Okay, we are live. We have a very special session for today on DeFi Singapore. I just want to thank Jim Cantrell for joining us. We had a bit of a technical issues unfortunately this is not the same link. I'll probably have to blast it on another time at another place, but it will be still on the same channel. For people who are looking into this, I guess you know that's where they will be looking onto the same YouTube channel itself. Thank you, Jim, for joining us. It's such an honor for us to for you to even join us in Singapore itself. Danny is in Singapore, I'm in Singapore, Rico is in Malaysia. Jason, I don't know where you are, but I think you're in which part of Eastern Europe or something like that? Yeah, so yeah. Jason is using an interpreter to do the communication, so it's to make it easier as well. Yeah, so Jimmy, I will just go live straight into into this session. Basically, we've got a lot of questions from from the Asian people in Asia itself. First up, we just wanted to find out, you know, as a co-founder of SpaceX, you know, how did the team come together and have this whole idea of having, you know, going up to space back then? We're just very curious as to, I know you have said this probably a lot of times, but let's just hear the story.
Story, yeah, yeah. You know what's funny is when it happened, none of us thought it was really historic or anything like that. It was just, you know, all these things you were doing, but for me, it all started with a phone call from Elon. It was the summer of 2001 and it was a different world, by the way, back then. You know, not only was it 20 years ago, but it was pre nine eleven and there was a different sort of outlook on the world. It's kind of like how Covid's changed the world. I mean, nine eleven had that same effect and so this was prior to that. And it's kind of important to understand in the context of things that, you know, a private person or a private company building a rocket that could go all the way to space and deliver satellites, let alone go to Mars was was not something that anybody had done. A few people had tried it, but you know, it was not a not something considered in in the private sector domain at all. And so I get this call from from this guy, I didn't know who he was. I had no idea what PayPal was. You know, I've been really adopter of technology, but for whatever reason PayPal escaped me. And so so I get this call and I'm on my way home late in the afternoon and the cellphone rings and it's, it's a six five oh area code, which is Palo Alto, I used to live there, so I kind of knew that and I thought it was curious. Thought maybe somebody I knew, so I picked up the the phone and had the top down on the car, it was a convertible. And so, you know, I just answered and I got this barrage from the caller saying, I heard his name to be Ian Musk and, you know, he was talking about how he'd gotten fired from PayPal. And, you know, he had all this internet money and he wanted to do something with his internet money and, you know, didn't want to live on a beach and drink Mai Tais and he was, the guy didn't even know me and he's like giving me a whole life story. And so finally, you know, he said, I need to talk to you about, you know, getting some Russian rockets. And I hear you're the guy and I said, yeah, I can help you. So I tell you what, I'm, you know, I'm in my car, I'll call you when I get home. And he's like, okay. So I got home about 15 minutes later and, you know, my kids, they were very young at the time. And they grab on your ankles and, you know, ride your feet into the into the house and things like that. And soon as I got them kind of settled out, I went into my my office and called called the number back and it was a fax machine. And so I I thought, okay, you know, rich, rich guy with a fax machine, right? And so I just, you know, I'd had a lot of these internet guys who were interested in space contact us. Us being, you know, me and some of my colleagues and we kind of all had this little small group of people that that did work occasionally for these guys. And so I figured he was just another one of these flash in the pants, but about 20 minutes later he calls me back. He's kind of angry this time. And he's like, you never called me back. And I said, yeah, I did, I got your fax machine. He's like, oh, okay, well, this is my, this is my mobile number, so call me here. So, you know, he starts to explain about how, you know, he wanted humanity to be a multi-planetary species. He had three things. It was that and then there was getting humanity off of fossil fuels. We see that's sort of what he's doing with Tesla. And then the third thing was to make it such that tyrants and tyrannical governments could never control the destiny of humanity. And I have yet to imagine what that is, but if you read sort of what they're, if you subscribe to Starlink, you know, you have to acknowledge that Mars is is not subject to the laws of Earth. So it's kind of probably along the lines of the third question. So, but I mean, at the time, this all seemed like crazy talk, you know, it really did. And, you know, I've got this way of filtering out crazy talk and little I realize how, you know, how the future would pan out. I mean, had I had a crystal ball and could see this, I might have might have done differently. But so anyhow, we talked some and, you know, it was pretty clear. He, you know, he wanted to do this Mars mission and he wanted to show that humanity could be a multi-planetary species. He still used that even 20 years ago and nothing's really changed there. So he, you know, he said, we've got to get together and can I come visit you tomorrow? You know, so this is all going a little fast for me now. And, you know, he was going to fly his private plane and come visit me at the house. And I'm just like, no, we're not doing that. And so I lied to him and said, hey, I'm busy tomorrow and about Sunday I'll meet you in Salt Lake City at the commercial airport there. There, you know, back then you could just walk behind the security without a without a ticket. And it was a good place to meet people because they couldn't bring a gun or any weapon. It's true, that's why I did it, you know, I just didn't know the guy. And so I did, I did a little research and found out his name was Elon and so on. Like, okay, he's legitimate, but you know, so we met in, the Delta Airlines had what they called a crown room, which is airline club and they had a little conference room. So we rented that and we met there, he had his friend Adele Resi with him. And another guy named Bob Zubrin, who's the founder of the Mars Society was there as well. And I knew Bob and turned out Bob was the source of Elon's approach to me. So, so we planned it all out, you know, we planned out this project to get going on it. And what he wanted to do was to send mice to Mars. And I called it the round trip rodent pornography tour. So, you know, that's what he, that's what he had in mind because Bob sold him that, you know, and I love Bob. Don't get me wrong, he's he's one of my dearest friends, but I thought this idea was crazy. And so anyhow, we put a team together and as we got going, we eventually sold Elon on something that that we thought was a better idea was it was a growth chamber that would go on the surface of Mars and the and the chamber would use the Martian carbon dioxide, which we know plants absorb and create oxygen. So it would just be a demonstration of hope for someday terraforming Mars. And he liked that and there was a, there was a company here in Tucson that had been flying experiments on the shuttle that had proposed this to NASA. It was a little too hot for NASA to do because of the contamination issues and so on. And but Elon loved it, so that's what we went with. And so we went, you know, part of the problem was buying Russian rockets because he knew that he couldn't afford US rockets and that was the reason. Through strange circumstances, we can go into if you like a little bit later, but I spent six years in Russia off and on. And part of what we did was convert ICBMs to satellite launchers. And so I knew the people, knew the right people to talk to. And so we made a couple of trips over there once we decided what the what the mission looked like. And we recruited some peoples from Mars Pathfinder from JPL. And we had a really good design, actually, it's called Mars Oasis. And so we went to the Russians with it and it was a very serious thing as far as we were concerned. And one of the guys that was on the last trip with us was Mike Griffin, who later became the NASA administrator. And I had known Mike for a while and brought him in on this. And so at any rate, we we went over two trips and the first trip was kind of get to know these people and, you know, introduce the idea. And the second trip was to actually go make a deal on on some of the rockets. So we had two companies that we were after, Machine Destroyer and then and then the other one that made the the NEPR. And so we we went in to the first one and that was where Elon got spit on by the chief designer. And, you know, you know, you got to realize this guy's in his late twenties and he dressed like I am now, right? In a t-shirt and the Russian society, very hierarchical and age dependent. And, you know, I was bad enough in my late thirties, but here's this guy, you know, in his early twenties, who's, who's, I guess, mid to late twenties, you know, he's a young guy, looked at and couldn't grow facial hair. He was not taken very seriously by them. So, but again, like me, you know, they didn't see that that he was going to end their entire industry of of commercial launch. And so we went over to Cosmatross for the for the NEPR and they were a little nicer, but kind of same response, you know, which is we don't sell rockets to guys like you. So, like, okay, so so we went back to the airport and Mike and I, you know, had the same sort of feeling of things when you get on, get on an American airline and take off out of Moscow. It's like you've you've escaped, right? And yet again, the Grim Reaper you've left in behind. And so, so, you know, he and I were celebrating with some whiskey and Elon's up in front of us and he's tapping on his computer, you know. And Mike, he was raised by, someone say raised by wolves, but it was, his dad was an army colonel. Rough dude, you know, in terms of how he talks and he elbows me and he says, he says, what the fuck do you think that idiot Savant is doing over there? And Elon didn't didn't miss a beat, he's just tapping away. And I said, plan nine to save the Earth, right? And finally Elon turns around and he says, no, guys, he says, we're going to build this rocket ourselves. And Mike, he goes, oh, nobody's ever tried that before. You'll surely succeed. And I said to Elon, there's like, there's like a whole graveyard of dead bodies out in front of you. You're going to have to walk over to get there. And he's like, he's like, well, but I got a spreadsheet. And Mike's like, oh, that's different, we have a spreadsheet, you know. So Elon turns, he says, fuck you all, he says, look at this. So he sends the computer back and Mike and I start looking at it, we're like, oh, where do you, this is pretty good, where where'd you, where'd you put this together from? Oh, wow, I had some help from my friend Tom and, you know, some of the other guys that were on our team that we'd introduced him to. So he'd been, he'd been off, you know, watching these guys build little rockets in their garage. And, you know, in his mind, he went from that to this starship, you know, what you see now today. And it's just, it's incredible, the expansiveness of his mind going from that one thing to where he's at today. And I, you know, I've been absolutely wrong about everything Elon's ever done, right? So so take whatever my prediction of Elon is, except that he's going to Mars and and just go the opposite direction with it. Because I I've always been wrong about him.
All right, that's interesting to know. One of the other questions that we have is, was there even plans for a Mars, you know, economy? You know, like, what's the currency going to be like? I mean, that's like the number one question I'm getting.
Well, so I can tell you back in the early days, you know, when we were still like looking at Mars Oasis, he was hiring these these futurist artists, kinds of people that would draw Mars bases for him, you know. And and one time he gave me a Mars base, you know, it was at one of these meetings we'd have. We called them Space of Paloozas, you know, we'd get together on the weekends and and we, you know, it's looking back, it was all these really influential people now, they're they're like the leaders of the space industry. And but but we get them all together for a weekend and in fact, who's the, who's the, who's the guy that made the Titanic movie, the director, he was there.
That's quite a while ago, I can't remember as well.
My old memory, but you know, so we just had this really crazy group of people. And so anyhow, Elon hands me this, 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 you know, plan for the Mars base. He said, well, I'd like you to look at this and see what you think. And I'm looking at it, you know, it's all these drawings, I'm like, Elon, said, you know, we got a hard enough trouble, you know, convincing people we're going to like do a private mission to Mars, let alone, you know, talking about Mars. It's like talking about being abducted by aliens, you know, just don't do it. And so I never heard from him again, but, you know, I suspect that that just kept going on. He, Elon had all these, you know, kind of like how he approached me, you know, all these little secret kinds of things that that spurred his interest, that he'd put his own money into and nobody'd ever know about. And I wonder how many more of those are out there, right? But that's how he does things and, you know, it's it's, the guy's mind never stops. And I've got to, I got to imagine that this is how he, you know, he takes these ideas and he has somebody else sort of start to refine them. And and he's extremely bright and gets involved, so I'm sure he thought about the currency. And this is pre Bitcoin, you know, so I never heard of that point in my life. So, but it's, you know, it's a natural, right? Any currencies are a natural together. In fact, I think if you want to extend it, I think blockchain, I know there are a lot of people that think blockchain is magic. A little more sober view of that, but I do think that it's probably the the chorus of the space economy. So tokenization of of these space assets, I think, is the is the future using a blockchain like type security. So I think, I think Elon's probably thinking along the same lines, right? And would surprise me.
Right, so that would be like a Mars coin, for example, that he might create or could be Bitcoin that he's using as one of the currencies as well.
Well, you know, let's face it, Bitcoin is kind of like the dollar, it's going to be around.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, what it trades at relative to other things, we'll see. But, you know, the whole idea of tokenization of a of a space asset is you create this this coin and if it becomes popular and, you know, you own part of it, but then you start to, you know, have miners and people that sell it and use it, then you've got a way to finance your space assets. And it's sort of like a, it's like a, you know, an SEC run trade market, you know, trading stocks and so forth. I mean, it's a way to finance these sort of things. And we've seen people, you know, do this in other sorts of things, but I think it's very real in space because you don't have any sovereignty.
Correct.
And, you know, there's a, there's a foreign policy issue with with US dollars and having so many US dollars in so many foreign countries, you know, we've essentially got a stockpile of our currency all around the world. It's a, it's kind of a weird place for a country to find itself in. And you know, cryptocurrency is the the answer to a lot of that. And especially when we talk about civilizations off the earth, which are inevitable, right?
Yeah.
We sit here today, it seems like a far off idea, but it's inevitable, it's going to happen.
So I've heard this rumor that on the International Space Station, the astronauts are actually trading with each other. There's kind of a space economy already that's happening. Is this something that you can verify?
Well, that came verified firsthand, but yeah, I've heard the same rumors and but think about it. I mean, you know, you're you're in a, you're in a closed environment, there's a scarcity of resources. People are going to trade things, right? And bartering, you know, the thing that cryptocurrencies do is they, they're a measure of how you value barter, right? And it's it's another form of bartering. And I'm not not the least bit surprised that these guys would trade all sorts of things. And I know the the Russians, you know, like certain kinds of things like lemons, you know, they they send lemons up with their other things. The citrus just did for whatever reason, they desire that after being on the space station for a while. So I could certainly see it.
Right, that's quite true. Guys, I don't want to take all the time, you guys have any questions for Jim? If you guys want to ask questions, we've got four viewers and this time unfortunately because of the technical issues. To our viewers, if you have any questions for Jim, I know some of them are close buddies. Basically, we just had an earlier session talking about Bitcoin's price story. So if you guys have any questions for Jim, you can actually put it up onto the comment. We'll ask Jim to share as much as he can. We do have, he do have. He's like secretly communicating to you guys now.
Spanish or what?
I think, I'm not sure about his nationality, could ask him.
I think his interpreter is being muted.
Hi guys, I think we had a problem with the other connection I have with Jason, so that's why I muted myself. I'm gonna translate back.
Thank you. Yes, so go ahead, ask the question.
And so Jim, what do you think about the philosophy? We have backwards, the Bitcoin, yeah, the philosophy of Bitcoin.
Philosophy of Bitcoin?
Yeah, like ideology or philosophy, yeah.
Yeah, I'm a huge supporter of this, I, for a number of reasons. I'm not a very political person, but I like the idea of taking value transfer out of the hands of governments. It's certainly one way that these governments around the world, some to more of a degree than others, you know, try to control what's going on. You know, in the United States, it's almost becoming illegal, if you will, to carry cash. It's it's really bizarre because when I, you know, when I grew up as a kid, it was shameful to use your credit card at a at a store, you know, like for groceries. It was, it was a funny thing, you know, in the seventies, you know, only only poor people use their credit cards because they couldn't afford the cash for it. But it's just, it's flipped completely the other way around. And if you carry too much cash, you know, the police can often confiscate it. I would maintain it's not legal, but they maintain it's legal and there's all sorts of fighting that goes on. So anytime you see, you know, a government and governments around the world disliking something as much as they do Bitcoin, you know, it's the right solution. So that aside, you know, it again, it opens up. I think it's the most innovative way of transferring value that I've seen. And and that includes, you know, things like documentation and contracts and so on. To me, the, there's a lot of hype around it, obviously, and I don't buy into that. But but it's not a solution to every problem and, you know, and all our medical problems. But it's certainly, certainly a very, very compelling way to transfer value. And I think as people mature the blockchain technology, you'll find out it's useful to a whole lot of other things besides just value transfer. And I know some of the security stuff I'm working on on satellites is creeping in as well already. And I've got my company Phantom where we're working, we're working on a satellite based network that operates off of off a blockchain. And, you know, when we're, when we're ready, we'll go public with it. But we think it's a big part of the future. We think that it's a way to protect value transfer and that's both, you know, monetary value and then information value. So that's really, that's what hacking is all about, right? Is to hack into information. So I could go on and on about, you know, how I think politicians utilize their access to information through their spy agencies to, you know, do insider trading, but I won't even go into that. So but really, these things, I think, can help clean up the system immensely and put some fairness back in it.
Yes, Rico, come.
Jim, what do you think of a blockchain that is like privatized? Where, you know, things can be traced once you enter the blockchain?
Yeah, why not? I mean, isn't that the point? What the hell business is it of our governments to know what we're, what we're possessing and not possessing, right? And I, there's, to me, there's no fundamental reason why the government should should do that. And this is a point of control. I, you know, I'm sympathetic to the idea of money laundering and terrorist activities. And, you know, this is a tool they use to to track those things. But, you know, guess what, they're just going to have to get better at it and then not impinge on the rest of us who are, you know, I'm assuming all of us around the table here are honest sort of entrepreneurial types. And, you know, I got no interest in money laundering and all that sort of thing. So so it's it's something that, you know, checks the the balance of power. You know, why, why do you think the Chinese government hates it so much? And it's definitely something that takes their control away. So to me, this is the battle for the next hundred years, you know, you guys are younger than me. You're inheriting this kind of screwed up world without we cleaned up, you know, the world when we got rid of the Soviet Union. But there's a much more menacing form of tyranny that's taking place. And I'm a big believer that that technology is one of the only ways we can battle tyranny. And if you, if you look at some of these futuristic movies like Terminator and things like that, it kind of the world out, right? And Bitcoin's a part of that. It's, you know, we have to, we have to be able to exchange value in this world. And, you know, we're just, we're just many steps ahead in the Bitcoin world or the cryptocurrency world. We're many steps ahead of the government, they just can't figure this stuff out. Every time they try to do it, they screw it up, you know, they, and even like Facebook and some of these big corporations, they're too stupid to do any, any good at it. They're because they're wrapped around their entire world that they live in. And and they, you know, they they don't sort of go and absorb this this culture. And that's one of the things I really like about this. So my son, you probably know, is a cryptocurrency guy and he introduced me to this whole world. At first I thought he was crazy, but, you know, I like people at these conferences and feel this sort of, I don't know, anarchy, sort of the spirit of anarchy. It's it's not really anarchy, but it's just, it's like screw you, sort of, you know, we're going to do what's right and you're going to, you're going to follow us, sort of attitude. I I just love that.
In the words of the DeFi movement, they are the degenerates, basically.
Call us who you like, right? If you're going to call us degenerates for for doing this, you know, this says a lot about yourself, I think.
Yeah, interesting. Yeah, it's interesting that you mentioned earlier about, you know, the, you know, with the cryptocurrencies specifically into the, sorry, in in terms of the blockchain in your, that your company is doing. Just for our readers, viewers, just to take note, you know, Jim is the CEO and co-founder of Phantom Space Corporation. So the kind, he just mentioned to you that he's doing some form of blockchain on space and that's just quite cool. I can only imagine in my mind right now what what the entire node system that's going to take place in space. So, yeah, that's, that's just something that's mind blowing for for me because it's the first time I'm listening to this. Any advice that you can give to young entrepreneurs, you know, who who wants to be in this space? You know, in the blockchain space or be in business, basically?
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of advice. I mean, some of us come from, you know, backgrounds that are more traditional and yet a lot of them, you know, come from totally, you know, non-collegial or not college educated type of backgrounds. It doesn't matter, right? It really doesn't matter if your passion's about doing something and you have a unique idea and you have the persistence and the and the, it's an idea that people want to buy, you'll be successful. So I think that the biggest barrier for people to get into this really is just getting over that, you know, the fear of jumping into it. It seems, it seems terribly complex to, you know, to get into something new that you don't know anything about and and make a living. It's like jumping off a cliff, but, you know, once you do it, you can't get past it, you'll do it over and over again. You know, it's, it's almost addictive and it's it's a way of life. But, you know, you just, just don't let let yourself talk yourself out of it. I talked myself out of being an entrepreneur for too many years. And then finally, you know, when I left SpaceX, I just said, well, I got, I got no choice, right? I can't go back because now, you know, you got to realize, when I joined SpaceX, everybody thought I lost my mind. And they didn't want me back and, yeah. So so I had no choice but to go on my own and I did well at it. But, you know, that's what got me over the fear and some people don't have that fear, like my son, he just doesn't have it. But most people do. And then once you, once you get in there, you know, you really got to look at three things. So you don't think about money, right? Don't ever do it because of the money, the money will happen if you do it right. But but you got to do something you're good at and you got to do something you're very passionate about. It's got to be something people have a demand for. And I think it's the latter one that gets people in trouble a lot of times, the passion and the good part. Mostly people are good at, you find some that aren't, right? But most of them are good, but it's, it's the, you know, somebody really want to buy this thing. And so you look at somebody like Steve Jobs and he was a master at inventing things that none of us thought we wanted. And then we couldn't live without after he invents them, you know. So there's, there's, there's like a magic that some people have and some of us are better at that than others, you know. And you got it, but you got to, you got to make that happen. If you get all those three of those things going, the money happens, right? And then once you, once you get into this, the other thing is, you know, you could have some good days and some very bad days, right? I mean, I had a company that that went under and we lost a hundred million dollars. And that was a very bad day and it took me a few days, but I, I stood back up again and got started again with Phantom. And you just, you just can't give up, you just can't. And if you've got this in your head and you're sure it's right, you just keep going at it. And it becomes your life's work in some cases and that's okay. I mean, that's, we're all born for some reason or another, right? And whether it's blockchain, whether it's space stuff or anything, you know, just just go for it. And the world needs you, the world, if you're an entrepreneur out there, let's see, the world needs you. We may, we need more people like you guys here that that want to do do these things, you know, we don't, we don't need. We may, we need more people like you guys here that, that want to do, do these things, you know, we don't, we don't need more sheep and, and people that.
That's very encouraging to our, to our viewers, I think I'm gonna quote you on the, on the entrepreneur or somewhere, that it's gonna say things like this. Encouraging words for that, thank you Jim for that, that, you know, kind words to everyone who's an, an entrepreneur, you know, in, in Singapore, in, in Asia, in Southeast Asia.
We're all the same, we are all the same all over the world, there's no national or racial or sex boundary between us, we are all the same.
Awesome, yeah, I guess that's actually all the questions I have, actually, the rest of you guys, Danny, you've been quiet.
Yeah, usually quiet, right, most of the time.
I know, I know, yeah, he's just keeping quiet on the side, yeah.
Just absorbing what Jim has been saying.
Yeah, words of wisdom and.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually highly keen on, so, I'm actually a known token农民 in the space. So what, what I am mostly keen on is looking at the fact that if we are gonna have like just interplanetary traveling and so on, right? At the end of the day, you know, we're, we're gonna have our own economic system, you, you know, it's a chance to reboot that economic system. Yeah, the, the messed up system that we have in space right now, you know. I'm involved in like global finance, like entrenched with the politics, understand economic hat. A couple of talks with, with some of us, so it, 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 you know, they know that the war is in a huge mess right now. And, yeah, and, and they are now being very impatient and they are trying to cause a huge wealth transfer currently. Yeah, in fact, even in the United Nations, right, there are, there are already, there are already ideas that are being seen where no longer should people have possessions, you, you know, everything doesn't need to belong to anyone and so on. Everything is a shared pool and, and, and I see that, you know, this is gonna be.
We've been up before, haven't we, that was called, let me see, communism, I think is.
Yeah. It is, it, it was exactly, you know, what, what we were fighting against and so on. And you, you know, like being in the, being in Bitcoin for, for quite a number of years. What I've seen is, you know, I, I was part of the, I was part of the gang, part of the, you know, the defiant people. We were part of, we are part of that group of people, you know, that believe that the monetary system can be changed. The capitalism can be overturned in a sense or maybe changed into a way in which it's, it's a lot less, this, give less disparity to the people.
So you're purifying it, aren't you? You know, I mean, by, by going around all these other ways that people can, can import all the, all the bad parts of it and make it more communistic. We're purifying it with Bitcoin.
And now you see, so basically with all these things, right, you know that Jim is definitely a Bitcoin maximalist. Bro, you're one of us, man.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm a hundred percent, yeah.
Yeah, so then the next question I'll definitely be asking is this, what do you think about other cryptocurrencies then? If we are, if we are talking about Bitcoin, right, I understand that, you know, that's a core of our beliefs, you know, we believe that. Yeah, that's, that's gonna be the next new monetary value and monetary system and such, but what about the other cryptocurrencies? What do you think?
It's a great question, right? So Bitcoin got adopted because it was the original one and, and it's, it's kind of like, it's kind of like the dollar, why do people go into the dollar? Well, they say stability, but, you know, it's, it's, it's a known quantity and it's been around for a long time. But, you know, it's alt currencies, there's, it's interesting, some of them are, you know, shitcoins as we call them and some of them I think have some real technical merit, but the, the one that's gonna rise will be the one that makes the transactions easier and more, more quickly done, I think. Because the, the, the problem I see from a technical point of view of cryptocurrency is just the volume of transactions to run, you know, the world economy is so, so enormous that the, the infrastructure, the, the mathematical infrastructure of, of Bitcoin is just inadequate. So, so I think that, that it has to grow over decades maybe to, to do that. But the one that, that breaks that, that, that paradigm and is, you know, able to, to have, you know, so many transactions per minute that, that it's, it's actually efficient will be the one that becomes dominant. And, you know, that's, that's the one I'm looking for, as I look around at all of the, you know, the various altcoins. I've invested in a lot of different altcoins and so on and, and, you know, I've lost a lot of money, I've made a little bit of money, I, I made more money than I've lost, but. I'm using incredibly bad bets too, you know.
I'm sure everyone's gone through that as well.
It's painful, you know, you watch sixty thousand dollars evaporate overnight, you're like.
Yeah, we, we feel you, we feel you, Jim. Yeah, well, I guess the time is almost up because you do have a call soon, right? Yeah.
Yeah, it's great, sorry, we worked a whole hour, but it's good, I'm, I'm always happy to come back. So if you guys give your audience enough time to recover from all the bullshit here, then invite me back to do it again.
Whenever you're single, yeah, appreciate it.
If we're ready to talk about our space stuff, we should, we should get together again.
Yeah, there's so much more we want to ask you.
Yeah, because, right, yeah. Let's, let's see, me, Rico and Jason, we are definitely, we are definitely working on some space projects, actually, so, yeah.
We definitely have something to talk about, yeah, but let's not wait for another call, private one this time round, not, not a public one, so. Yeah, thank you Jim for joining us, much appreciate that, thank you for your time, sir. And the rest of you, thank you for joining in as well, thank you everyone for coming in as well, thank you very much.
Thank you.